So would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings, the first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda. The listings under the consent agenda include a group of items to be acted upon in a single motion and vote. It's designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. At this time, I will ask if there is a citizen or a member of the council that wishes to have any specific item removed from this agenda for discussion. Either the public or council meeting may want to be removed from the consent agenda at this time prior to the council's vote. The items on tonight's consent agenda include approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of September 27, 2016; approval of the expenditure vouchers for October 11, 2016; approval of a renewal hotel and restaurant liquor license for Nero's Mediterranean Grill. Is there anybody in the audience or on council that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? If not, then may I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the additional expenses of $369,996.81.
Keel?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Alright, we have a presentation this evening. Michelle McNulty is here to represent Boutique Air. And she's going to be here tomorrow as well when we do the ribbon cutting. So if you'd like to come forward, Michelle, please.
Hi, everyone, thank you for having me. I'm Michelle McNulty. On behalf of Boutique Air, we want to thank you for accepting our bid and having us in this community. We are very excited to be here and have the ribbon cutting tomorrow. Hope to see you all there. It starts at 1:00. I am the community marketing manager. So I am the person, if you need anything, have concerns, media, advertisement, I'm the person to reach out to. So I'll be your point of contact. And I just wanted to come and introduce myself and say thank you.
Thanks for being here. I had a question about advertising.
Yeah.
Was that, where are you at in that process right now? I think the last time we talked about advertising, was there anything on the radio yet?
Right, and she's brand new. I think she's about, like, I don't know, seven or eight days old with the company. She's pretty, she's pretty new, so...
So we do have, X-Rock is doing radio advertisements right now.
X-Rock?
It was, yeah.
Oh, you mean the local radio?
Yeah.
Red Rock?
Right now, saying to come out for the ribbon cutting. And then I know John put a local ad in the newspaper also for it.
The newspaper?
Yeah, and then moving forward, I've had meetings and am meeting with people tomorrow as well for opportunities in different magazines, newspapers, radio stations to advertise that we fly in and out of Cortez to Denver and Phoenix. And they also know, like, for sponsorships, we're available, talking about that if you guys have big events or anything around those lines.
That's really from our meeting what sounds like the focus is going to be a lot more event sponsorship, a lot more community involvement from Boutique. So I think they want to have their name, their sponsorships on a lot of local special events to kind of get their name out there a little bit. So it seems to be kind of the focus of where they're going.
Yeah, we definitely want to be part of the community. So, and how do you guys feel that we are part of the community?
Yeah, well, we're, so far, the early indicators are that we've been a successful part of the community early on. So we appreciate you guys being here.
Yeah, well, thank you, guys. Any other questions?
Well, good, we'll see you tomorrow.
You got your book of tickets tomorrow.
Yeah, you can enter a raffle for round trip tickets. I'll see you guys tomorrow, hopefully.
Is the city council eligible to win? That's the next question.
Sure.
Yeah. Any, any member of the community is eligible to win. Alright, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you for being here.
That works for me.
You gotta win them first.
Thank you, Russ. Thanks, Michelle.
Russ was here?
They said nothing about Patriots.
He was so quiet back there.
Nothing about Patriots.
Gloating in his wind is what he's doing. Silently gloating.
He's already given the word, no excessive talking at the ribbon cutting tomorrow.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like it to open the meeting up for citizen participation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come and address council? Okay, in that case, I will close it for citizen participation. We have no public hearings, we have no unfinished business, so we're going to move on to new business. We have a bid for asbestos abatement at 414 North Beach. Sam?
Evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
With that, just kind of refresh real quick. You know, we've had our ongoing code enforcement and nuisance abatement program going on for the last couple, three years by council's request. And last year, we were, we were given $50,000 line item to try to pursue some more of the buildings that we couldn't necessarily get voluntary compliance on. So we had a number of them pegged out. The one over in 414 North Beach, I don't know if you all recall, there was a fire there about 2012, I think it was. And the individual that lived there was not really capable of self-preservation and was subsequently moved into assisted living housing and couldn't rehab the house. So anyway, we've been, we've been watching that one, that was on our list. We've notified the owners, or the remaining family member, I think she just has a son, whom I've visited with personally a couple times. And he's indicated that he doesn't have funds either to rehab the house. And that's how we kind of targeted them. Along those same lines, this year, we've, we had three others that we, that we were in contact with, with the owners. One of them has actually sold the house and has decided, sold it to a person who wants to try to rehabilitate it themselves. And they've pulled a building permit on that right now. So that's a good positive result on that. We have another one. They've cleaned up the outside. And actually, just last week, we received an email from them. They said they're going to try to pursue demolition on their own. So we're hoping that those are two that we don't have to deal with. We've got a third, or pardon me, a fourth one that we've been in contact with the ownership too. And they've indicated that they were going to rehab it, but they've told us that twice now in about an 18-month period. So I'm not really sure where that one's going to go to, so...
And then we also had the one last year on 145. They kind of triggered this discussion, and that was an owner too that ended up demolishing it. So I like the track record, I like the fact that council's put this money in. But when we've contacted these folks, the majority of them have elected to fix it up to themselves and to address it. And then I'd also say, even though that we've got this money budgeted, it's really a loan, it's not a gift. Because the money that we spent to demolish it would just be a lien on the property. It'll just get assessed on the property tax records.
That's what I was going to ask.
So, you know, it may take, you know, if that property sells in 10 years, we're going to have that, that there.
How about before then? Because if you certify it as property taxes...
Somebody buys it on a tax sale, right?
No, if they're paying their own taxes, it'll be increased. And if they stop paying the taxes, yeah, but we'll have it billed out in 2017. Well, if we get it certified this year, we'll have it billed out in 2017 for 2016, or maybe 2018. The liens, yeah, those are kind of, that's why we've got the certification ordinance, so we can get our money back quicker.
I'm just under the premise that if people launder up money to demo the house, at some point, this is going to be a tax sale or something. But regardless, though, again, this is not just a subsidy from the city. This is us making a short-term investment to clean it up, and that money will come back to the taxpayers' debt.
Then you have a saleable piece of property. So, so then how do you, because if I remember correctly from reading, the city's going to do the demo then? You'll have it abated, and then the city will...
Right.
You felt that you could do that less expensively than...
Right, actually, that's a good way to dovetail into that. One of the things that we're trying to do is, as much as possible, keep the prices as low as we can. Because we do know that we don't want to have a tax lien that's higher than the property value, obviously. So that's the reason we bid this out in two different ways. We did it with asbestos, or with asbestos and demolition. Because quite frankly, we didn't know what it would cost. So we wanted to get some ballpark figures in there, kind of, kind of show us. I think clearly, we can go ahead and demo it ourselves after we get the asbestos out of there. The numbers I come up with are $67,000 if we rent the equipment. Talked to Phil Johnson with the Public Works, and he's got plenty of operators, he said. Honestly, it shouldn't be there two days at the max, demo it out three at the furthest. We're hoping we come in well under the $6,000 to $7,000. The equipment itself is about $3,000 to rent the equipment. To have it delivered here from the rental company is about, say, $700 for round numbers and whatever our tipping fees are. And of course, we'll charge back the hourly rate that our operators are on there, so include that, want to track that. But the, I guess you saw, saw the bids on the asbestos removal were really, really far apart. So we, we called them and tried to figure out why, why the disparity. I'm not really quite sure how they misunderstood option A. Some of them, some of them thought that there was supposed to be some asbestos left in the building. So I don't know how they...
That they were removing asbestos in the building when they left?
Yeah, I couldn't figure that one out either. But I actually had about three different contractors that we contacted that they didn't understand the bid. So I guess we'll try to be more clear in the future. I don't know how much more clear we could have been, but... Anyway, the, as it shows on the, on the report there, that one of them actually came in lower than Golden Environmental. But after we've talked to the people that had the actual lowest bid, they had missed part of the asbestos, which would have bumped them up to, what did I say, $17,000 or so. So truly, Golden Environmental had the lowest bid for what we were asking, actually looking for. And so they've been calling me two or three times now, waiting to see who gets the bid. So we did one final last thing this last week to the last known address for the son of this state. We sent him another notice, just letting him know what we're doing and what our intentions are, and give him the last opportunity. We're going to go ahead and run with the asbestos because it is dangerous. We've had ongoing problems on over there. All of us, either the fire department, myself, police, have had to go over there multiple times and seal the place back up. You know, I don't know if you saw the photos in there, but it's, it's an accident looking for a place to happen. So anyway, so any other questions on the asbestos abatement?
And how soon do they think they'll get that done once they get started? Sounds like they're eager.
You know what, I think when they did the one over on Highway 145, Dolores Road, I think they were in and out of there in about a week. And this is kind of somewhere, maybe a little bit larger scope on here. I think one of the differences that this will be, that might take a little bit more time. The other one, the house was old and damaged, but this one had the fire, so we got a bunch of debris in the way. So they're going to have to kind of fight their way around the debris and do all that. So I'm not sure how much that's going to affect them. I think it'll have some bearing, so...
Alright, are there any other questions, council? Do we have a motion, please?
I'd make a motion awarding that asbestos abatement bid to Golden Environmental for the abatement and demolish 414 North Beach Street.
Okay. Archibek?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Votes for a salt shed metal building, Phil.
Metal building?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here to talk about the steel portion of the salt shed. It's actually the skin, the exterior of a building that we'll be putting interior concrete walls in, six feet high, one feet thick, to store our mixed salt and sand mixture, our salt and, as well as our permanent cold tar for patch repair. It'll keep it out of the weather, it'll make it last longer, and we won't have the environmental effects on the salt, which makes it, it can re-solidify and make it, you know, we get some surface crusting that's wasted. We engaged Jones and DeMille Engineering Firm out of Monticello this year as part of our, when we outsourced some of our engineering work. And they designed the size of the building based on interaction with staff, you know, desires and wants, and what we needed to replace the existing failing shed. In doing that, we engaged four manufacturers. This is just the purchase of the building. What we'll do is we'll buy the purchase, we'll purchase one of the buildings, put a down payment on it, it'll be delivered in the spring, and then we'll bid out the erection of the building and the concrete work. So this is just a component of what we had budgeted this year. We'll be carrying over some funds into 2017 to complete this. It'll also be erected down in the new Public Works yard, which is due east of the existing yard where our new fuel cells are. And we have the industrial park expansion. We received four bids, and they're all very tight, ranging from Western Prefab for 26-4 Colorado Buildings, 24-9 New Core for 24-2, and Armstrong Steel Corporation at 20,400. I spoke to Sam about the compliance for this building for snow load, ground snow, wind exposures, and it meets the IVC 15. And staff recommends that we award the bid to Armstrong Steel. And we'll be, as soon as we do that, we'll sign on with them and give them the deposit, and we'll start scheduling for delivery in spring when we complete the project.
Where are we storing the salt now?
We have a Quonset hut that is up on top in the existing Public Works yard. That's on the east side, which is just north of where we do our dumpster maintenance. And it has a lot of corroded along the base. Searsa actually brought this to our attention to replace this building, I believe it was in...
About three years ago.
2014 inspection period.
Been on the list for a while.
Yeah, and, and I'm not writing that building off, I'm writing it off for salt and sand stuff. But we need to go in there and have it emptied and take out the concrete knee walls, which have shifted and moved. And because of all the corrosion, it may just be something we scrap, or we'll have it assessed, and we may repurpose that for, you know, recycled commodity storage and the like.
How big is it?
It is, well, the steel building is 48 by 52, but because of the internal concrete walls, it works out to be 40 by 50.
So it's fairly good size.
It is, and we have three separate bays. So when we do buy bulk materials, it's out of the snow and the rain. And there'll be a deck out in front of the bays, so we can actually mix the sand and salt before we load it into the trucks.
Okay, any other questions, council? May I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to award the bid of $20,400 to Armstrong Steel Corporation to engineer the building and provide stamp calculations and erection drawings.
Second.
Lucero?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
Resolution 37, Series 2016, support for 3A.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, city council has been really engaged, I think, in what happens to the old high school meeting. I'm sorry, the old high school building. In the agreement that we have with the high school, that really, one of the key conditions the city had was that the old high school would be torn down. So many of us have attended many meetings, many discussions to determine how they could facilitate that, what it would take to demolish it. As you know, the school, the school board has made the determination that they did have $1.87 million for a sports complex set aside, but that is in no way enough money to build a sports complex. So this money is just sitting in the bank. So they thought, well, if we could only do one thing, we could demolish the old high school building, use that for that money for a second. So as the city's done in the past, we have done previous resolutions to support for different local issues. In two weeks, we'll have two more resolutions for your consideration, which will be the Senate Bill 152. Questions, the opt-outs from the county and Manca's, or I'm sorry, Dolores, sorry, that. So that's for your consideration now, is a resolution to support for Resolution 37. And in my memo, I'm sorry, I said 1B, and it is 1A, or 3B.
No, it's 3A.
The last one was 3B.
Well, and I will tell you, it got sent to the printer with one listing as 3B. I had 600 things run off with 3B at the very bottom.
Oh.
Thank God I caught it before they did all 2,000 and ran it in the paper, so...
Yeah, so it is 3A, and the resolution says 3A, just my memo, I pulled up, I said 3B, because it's just forced to happen.
It's hard to keep those As and Bs straight. Simply because I've worked on this committee, I, I, we've been, we've really, really encouraged the school board to move forward on this. They have. Their hands are tied at this point. They've done everything that they can do, and what we need to do now is, as a community, give them permission to be able to take those funds and fulfill the promise that they made to the voters when they asked for the bond to be passed for the new high school, and, and that the old building would be, would be raised. They don't have the money to do, near the amount of money they would need to do a new stadium complex. And I don't know whether you mentioned it or not, but whatever monies they have left over after the abatement and the demolition, they would use to upgrade after stadium. So that improvements in lighting and track and all of that. So depending upon what the final cost of the demo project comes out as, you know, there, hopefully, will be enough money that they could pair with some additional grant funds to do something with that new stadium, which is really a good place for it because it's a neighborhood community, so...
And we, they are looking, and we're helping them look for EPA monies, state monies, anything to drive that cost down. It's just, I think it's hard for them to know how much money they would need, like the mayor said. And so it doesn't, I don't think there's a lot of logic tests that tax prepares for a million dollars. It turns out it was 1.1 because we know this school district does not have an extra 0.1 sitting around somewhere. So I think they are asking for the whole amount with every intention of trying to spend a lot less than that.
Doesn't mean they need to do taxes, it's, it's just being able to spend the money that they have. Why, why keep it on a bank account sometimes where it can't be used? So, may I have a motion if there aren't any other questions or comments?
More questions?
May I have a motion, please?
Honorable Mayor, I make the motion that we approve Resolution Number 37, Series 2016, a resolution declaring the city council's support for 3A, allowing Montezuma Cortez School District RE1 to take funds which were originally allocated to the school district in 2012, and reallocating $1.87 million for the purpose of abating and demolishing the old high school.
Second.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Alright, third-party plan review services for the Southwest Memorial Hospital project.
Alright, evening again. I think the memo we wrote was fairly self-explanatory. We'd just kind of like to elaborate on our office right now. We had a lot of projects come on this last year. And in construction valuation terms, it really wasn't that much different from the year before and the year before that when we did the schools. We have had, of course, some changes in our office. We've also done a lot more work in our office there, kind of broadened our horizons there. We have two planners on, we're all kind of working on the land use code. Of course, that's Tracy's, Hughes', and Eva's, Baileywick's. But it does involve other staff members quite a bit while we're trying to vet this thing down. We're also in the process of getting ready to change over to the latest model building codes. You guys will be seeing that come across the desk sometime in early spring. So a lot of that takes up a lot of our time. And then, of course, code enforcement and the other things that we're doing out of the office. We took over fire, fire permitting for burn permits. So all this kind of adds up. We kind of combined that with the way the projects landed. We were hoping that they would be spaced out so that we could do our own plan reviews, because we actually, we much prefer to do our plan reviews in-house. There's a lot of good reasons for that that I won't go into too much for. But, you know, we work kind of closely with the other departments, and, you know, if you've got a question with one of the departments, we can just go around the corner and pick up the phone right there. So this is kind of a stop-got measure. Mr. Ralph Ignor's in here, and Ralph and I have been working on since the high school project, actually. So when Ralph had brought the plans by for Davis Partnership, you know, he'd alluded that they really need to get going on this project. Of course, we're sensitive to that. So we kind of took a week to kind of review and look and see where we're at. And there was really just no way that we were going to be able to meet the deadlines and keep everybody else on track, because we have other projects, you know, people we've got to get attention to as well. So what we did was, we went out and farmed out, or went to some third-party folks to see that do the plan reviews third-party. We actually contacted four, we got three responses. We ended up with Seawest Code Consultants, it was our pick. I think the main reason was not just price, they actually came in lower than everybody else for the, for the value and the volume of work they'll do. But they're also, like myself, I'm a, I'm a building code official. I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer. Seawest has a full staff of architects and engineers on board that are also code officials to both. So they've got a little bit more depth, and they've been around for about 25, 30 years. So the firm has sold its 25, but the group has been together about 30 years. So we thought we had a good, a good, a good mix on that. Also on there, if you'll notice, the fees that they have for the 7100, kind of broke that down, how that kind of plays out for what we do out of our office. You know, it's not just myself doing plan review. There's a lot of people, we've got the city engineer, we've got the fire inspector doing reviews on it, and of course, our other folks with the, the plan review, like, for the landscaping and other items like that. So it all kinds of totals up with a, with a lot of time. And of course, we're going to be working on this project with further plan review all through the life of the project as change orders come through and all of this sort of stuff. We've already devoted quite a bit of time to it. Kind of give you a broad overview of how the plan review works on that. I think we started this, if you, in reality, we started talking to the hospital. When did we start this, Ralph? Or you guys start this all the way back in 15? Yeah, so, you know, we've got an awful lot of time invested in this project up to this point, right now. You know, we'll continue to have for the next year and a half or so. Yeah, so, so that's kind of an overview. We'd just like to pull the, pull the pressure off. You know, staff has, has been working real hard to keep up with our standards and meet our self-imposed deadlines, and we've done that to, for the most part. Might continue on with that, so...
Sounds very reasonable.
We hope so. If we'd have thought about it, we'd have probably made provision in the beginning of the year, but we were hoping to keep it all in-house.
Boy, and we are, and forgive me, I, we are going to just do more structure, I think, RFP, and get somebody like this as a backup for staff in the future. To me, this is kind of an interim step. I, I don't think we could really justify bringing somebody else in the building department right now based on this insane year. You know, it's like building a church for Easter, right? It's such an insane year, but... So I think it's a way for us to kind of hunt a little bit and kind of have these ebb and flows and not bring out staff, because the last thing I want to do is bring on another code official and in nine months say, well, we got to lay him off. We just didn't have that work. Or have someone go over to the, you know, service center, like, my God, they're, you know, people are never working over there. They don't have enough work going on. So I don't like that, but I think it's something like this where it's not really the hospital's fault that we're overwhelmed. They're just trying to build. And so it seems really reasonable to me to take this all and just take the part of our fees we normally collect to pay for this third-party to get them going.
Well, it's a good fix in the end.
Right, and also, you know, we've worked very hard to create a positive image. It's very hard to keep a positive image in a building department, quite frankly, it really is. And so, so we want to be as proactive as we can. And like I said, we do have self-imposed deadlines that we, that we put on ourselves. And, you know, I think doing surveys with private firms and with other jurisdictions... private firms and with other jurisdictions, we're on par with, with private firms for getting, you know, stuff out the door. C-West's code review time is three to four weeks, they agreed to do this one in three weeks. On a project this size, we're just slightly longer than that, you know, so, you know, we're right in there with the, with the private firms. Anyway, thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, Seth. Seth, I've got a question for you.
Yes.
Thank you. The 7100 is the fee?
And change, it's, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was going to say. But is that for the whole, whole project?
That will cover architectural, building, fire safety, handicap accessibility, plumbing, mechanical. It will not include electrical because electric, state does the electrical. We'll do a review, cursory review ourselves internally on the electrical, and then the site elements will still be done by Public Works. Sean Canada will do firearm systems, that sort of stuff. There is a question whether or not, you know, what other elements may have to go into the building, you know, we'll have to do those internal reviews. And then I'll be looking at it for certain things, just to make sure we're all coming together and not conflicting.
That's my next question, if you're still going to be in charge of looking at the, over the project?
I will. It'll all filter back through myself, and I'll be looking for potential conflicts.
And so this is just a plan review, so all the building inspections, we're still doing all those, we're just...
I was just going, just wondering how much they covered.
Right. And so basically, this isn't, it's, again, it's not really a cost for us, it's just revenue that we're waiving to another firm, we're just collecting less revenue for the city, and basically the, the value that Sam adds and the normal plan review that we collect through the building department through him, we're deferring all that to C-West.
Yep.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
So Sam will also get two hours of sleep a night instead of the one?
Yeah, which is, he just had a really good eval come up, and I promised him another hour of sleep and a little pay, so this is, that's...
That's double an hour.
The time he couldn't be better, really.
So he'll stay on for one more year, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions about it?
I don't have any. I have a minute. I'd make a motion to approve the expenditure of planning and zoning engaging C-West Code Consultants to perform the building plan review for the hospital medical office building project.
Second.
Carlson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Ralph, while you're here, I was just, I was driving by the hospital the other day and I noticed that there's a lot of chain link out there on the northeast corner of the hospital. What are they doing there? I couldn't figure out what that was.
That's part of our project, it's just going to be a material storage yard, basically a yard for us, so that's what's fenced right there.
Okay. Have you, have you guys started to break ground on this at all, or are you still waiting?
We have on the ambulance garage.
Okay, and that should be...
50 years of ugly.
Well...
Yes, we have.
I'm going to be anxious to see, I'm going to be anxious to see that when it's done. How long do you estimate for that, before that part?
Probably about nine months.
Okay, okay. And so you'll, you'll be breaking ground, you have to, we've got another three to four weeks out.
We are, we're waiting for the financing to be completed.
Okay.
And once that's done, we will issue notice, notice to proceeds to our contractor for the new patient wing and the MOB. What you just approved is, is review of the MOB plans, so.
Well, it's exciting time. Thanks, thanks for coming.
Thanks.
All right, we have no draft resolutions, no other items of business. Is there any citizen left that would like to address council?
Chief.
You're looking around, I didn't know whether you were. All right. The city attorney has no report. Shane.
Yes, ma'am. So, final reminder, tomorrow we have the ribbon cutting for BP Care. We're going to have a school bus of VIPs from Kemper Elementary to, getting there at 12:30, we're going to give them a tour of the equipment. We already have somebody planted in that group that's going to give grief to Russ, so don't worry about that. Thank you, Councilman Keel. At 1 o'clock, that's kind of when we're recommending everybody gets there, that we're going to do the welcome at 1:10, that'll be, the mayor will give some introductions, and then we'll have Sean Simpson, the CEO, will say a few words, the plane's going to land, you know, we're cut a ribbon, and the plane lands and the event's over. So, by show of hands, because we wouldn't post the, the door for this, who from City Council plans on attending?
You'd be riding the bus with the kids.
I got one, I got two, I got three, I got four.
That's time to turn you out.
Well, we'll definitely post for that, that's good, and we'll have, we'll have, I think, 20 seats others, we've got plenty seating for everybody, we'll do a nice ribbon cutting, the plane will get there, the kids will be able to see the plane, and then they're going to load up the next, now, the people flying out, who I think will feel very special having so much going on around them.
See that one engine?
Poorly, it's too soon. So that's the first thing, so, look forward to seeing you guys there, and so please plan on being there no later than 1:00 because this thing's going to go pretty quick, I mean, it'll be a quick turnaround, so if you show up at 1:20, you're going to probably have some Kool-Aid left over for you. And then, also, I want to mention that the city was invited to apply for the Community Builders Leadership Institute, which is a group that'll be in Durango in November, and so they kind of work on, on economic development, getting industries and different folks in the same room together, kind of work on goals as a community. So, we're invited to apply, I think, just because they were in Durango and we did, and we were accepted the next day, which was really good. So, we have, we'll have rep from the Housing Authority, from, we'll have a banker, we'll have our, from economic development, we'll have Chelsea in it, a lot of city officials, we'll have planning and building, grants, I'll be going, the mayor said she, you know, retain. So we'll be there, and the two kind of, because we had to narrow it down to a couple of goals, and so a couple of things, I said that we should work on, that we thought we should work on. One is, is getting more employers that pay a higher wage. You know, we get, it'd be nice to have some job creation that had, you know, more, better income coming out of it, you know, so we have that, and then also just more affordable housing. I've seen a lot of them, employers, you know, we even talked to Osprey, that when they bring new people in, it's hard for them to find housing in Cortez, so those are going to be, not the only things we're working on, but I think kind of the focus of how, how can we work on that? How could we bring in better employers? How can we target, you know, structured housing? So, just want to mention that, I'm happy, I think it's going to be a good deal, and they're putting us up at the strater, so.
Wow.
Yeah, 20-20, so.
When is that, this next week?
It's November 2nd to the 4th.
2nd to the 4th.
Yeah. So, I mean, my family and I aren't going on vacation here, but I am, so, at least, at least one of us is getting out of town.
Well, I'll, I'll be there to make sure he actually goes.
I'll get, I'll get lost.
Rather than playing golf.
Yeah, I turned it already.
I know, I know.
So that's all I've got. Four. No. Oh, and I also want to mention, congratulations to the first-place team of this year's golf tournament.
Now, who would that be?
Eric Ikenoy, Kay Hall, Ralph Parker, and this guy.
It's nice of those three to let you play with them.
What was it, one team?
We're doing, we're doing tours of, of my trophy at 11, 1, and 3. It is limited viewing, so anybody who'd like to come by? You can't touch it, but you can look at it.
How many teams were there?
Two. There were seven teams.
Seven teams of four?
They're a great class, and then...
You'll play next year? Against you?
Yeah, I can't ever, I'm working.
I'm working?
Working.
Well, hey, congratulations.
That's what I wanted, congratulations.
Game will play.
He's developing lots of marthable skills. You'll be going on the tour.
Well, I doubt anybody would want to watch the tour I had planned, but...
You never know. Are there any committee, City Council committee reports?
Golf advisory met last, we met on the...
September?
28th of September, yeah. We, we talked about where revenues were at with the golf course, kind of for the year, when the last meeting will be, I think that'll be next, next month. Last date for water, the water run, which we actually went a little longer than usual, which doesn't sound like a lot, but the amount of water that flows out of that course down into Ginnie Lake, pretty substantial, and has been able to make that kind of nice little repairing area down there. Shape of the greens, what a, what a great job our new greenskeeper's been doing, Russ...
Russ Grover.
Poor Russ Grover.
Poor Russ Grover, right? He's been just, a lot of foresight with that guy, kind of, do a good job out there, preparing for the fall and winter, you know, taking some stuff off the list, you know, trying to get ready for that, and, yeah, oh, and access, you know, that access, ongoing access issue.
They have worked that.
Is it being resolved?
It hasn't been resolved, no. And that's just, you know, something that they discuss, so, that's about it.
Hi. Keel? I went to the Historic Preservation Society meeting on the 5th, and they did retain someone to do the survey of the south side of Main Street, so they're getting started with that. It's Espinoza Consulting, and there's two gentlemen that are doing it, and then they actually picked up a, an intern from Fort Lewis College who convinced Linda to finally get on board with social media. So Historic Preservation Society is going to be talking to you because they want to try and see what the requirements are, to start a Facebook page. However, their first little foray was they found a box, and Linda, I know you remember this, the old 1986...
Oh yes, they brought them in.
Yellow t-shirts. I used to have one back in the day with the logo on it. I saw it, and I was like, I know that t-shirt, because I had one when I was a kid.
From the Centennial?
They found a box with belt buckles and the t-shirts, and I said, you should put this on, you should take a picture and put it on Remember Winning Cortez on the Facebook page, so they're going to start doing those sort of things, which was kind, it was cool to see, because I remembered it. I remember, I remembered like where I was when they had the parade, and it was kind of cool.
Oh, yeah.
And so they're going to start doing that, and there's one other thing that I'm supposed to, the flumes are, the flume panels are allegedly supposed to be installed next week. We'll see. And Linda has finally come around to Mike's interpretation of the land use code in its current incarnation, and so she is going to be having a meeting to let the people who have signed up on the Monizuma District, let them know that there may have been a miscommunication about some of the terms of doing improvements without getting approval. That's where it was at, so. There was quite a bit of discussion about you, Mike, and your purple house with green trim, but the suggestion that was made...
Actually pink.
Sorry, the suggestion that was actually made by myself was...
Pretty lame.
Uh, no, for future applications, because I, I realize there's this sort of like cart before the horse thing about, about going and getting approval, so I said, what if the application was amended to say, if you apply and you are approved, you agree to abide by this requirement?
Probably something like that needs to be done to get it going.
And, so I was supposed to let you know that I had a brilliant idea, so.
Were you supposed to remind him of your brilliant idea, or was it someone else?
Yeah, no, I, I am the designated person to bring that to council, so, but yeah, no, that's basically what we talked about, rather than amending the code and doing all the work that way, if we can amend the application to say, in the future, if you get approved, you agree to abide by these terms and seek the approval of the Historic Preservation Society, which I think eliminates all the problems, hopefully, with the land use code revisions, so.
Brilliant.
I know, sometimes I have...
Isn't it brilliant, I guess?
Sometimes I have flashes of inspiration.
Did you hear about Shane winning the golf tournament?
I did. We're just a roomful of narcissists sometimes.
It's probably, you're brilliant.
Yeah, great. But that was, that was basically the Historic Preservation Society meeting. I think there's going to be some really good things. The girl from Fort Lewis, I'm totally blanking on her name right now, but she's wanting to, she's in the southwest center over at Fort, and she's really wanting to do this type of work, and she seems like she's really a go-getter and real passionate, and I wish I could remember her name, but I'm sure she'll be coming to some of our meetings and things like that, so, that's all, okay?
I got one, just from the economic development, they're really going strong with the get out the vote to, yes, 1A, and, and it's still, the biggest obstacle is getting people to separate the vote to get rid of SB 152 and the tax. The tax basically is not, not an issue now, they're not looking for it, they're not going for it. The county commissioner says they are actually opposed to the tax right now, so, but it, people still think that if you vote yes on 1A, you're voting for a tax, and so they got some flyers out and stuff like that, that they're going to pass out and...
There's a, there's a good, the, the paper came out today in support of opt-out of 1A and, and the MCH, 13A.
It's a good thing.
And actually, they had some good arguments.
Yeah. Just lost my train of thought. I think we're done? Okay.
If I, if I distracted you.
No.
Was it last week that we met with the, the gal that came to, or the week before, I've lost track of time? Eric had, had invited a gal from an architectural firm who has a passion for, for looking at libraries, helping them lay out their floor plan and more effectively use, use their space. And our library is, has a, has a great staff, and we have wonderful library programs, but it's a little tired, and so this lady, and I can't remember her name, but she came in, she spent a day with, with the staff, with interested members of the community, they came and looked over the area, found out what kinds of programs, and then came up with some, with some really neat ideas of ways that they might be able to change the layout without having to move lots of walls and make an addition. And met with Eric, and I came in and Shane came in, I think we were the only three at the end of the day, where she actually kind of laid out just a verbal plan. There's, they're talking right now about doing away with the circulation desk, and instead of having one main circulation desk, divvy that up so that there are three sites throughout different parts of the library where people can go to check out books, where library staff would be seated at high tables on tall stools so that they'd be more of in a standing position, which encourages patrons then to ask them, you know, questions, and then they can go and show a patron or something as opposed to pointing in the direction. So anyway, she's supposed to come up with something in the next few weeks that's concrete and on paper, and, and give some suggestions for, you know, some new furnishings, different layouts, some things that can be done, so we're looking forward to, to see that, to see what changes that we can have for the library. So, the workshop, we had the opportunity to meet Ivan Silas, who is working in recycling materials, and Robert Renning, who is a senior parks irrigation worker, both of those folks are in new positions. Then we spent the remainder of our time evaluating and making decisions about the community support grants that were requested, and came up with, decided, decided how much we were going to give, and Don will then be sending those out to those people that receive grants.
You know, regardless of where we all stand necessarily on all those, I appreciate all the input I get and hear from you guys as well about where we are with... I get and hear from you guys as well about where we are with how we decide to spend our money, so.
I think the nice thing about this, particularly this year, it didn't seem as agonizing this year. And I think a lot of that was because we brought different things to the table, you know, that each of us looked at it a little different way, so that...
I think that's healthy.
Yes. For myself, I was able to see things from a perspective that was different than I brought to it when I was just looking at it by myself. So I appreciated everybody's input in it. And actually, it was kind of fun.
Charlie came up and brought him up from his $700 he cashed in the entire request.
I got overgrown.
Yeah. And those receiving the grants are thankful.
Yeah. Now I got to sell the farm.
Is there anything else for the good of the city?